Good morning. Hate to interrupt good conversation, but want to say a few things before the hearing gets started. The IURC hearing will start promptly at 6:00. Before that happens, just want to fill you in on a few things about the process and about the cases that are pending before the commission. I'm Anthony Swinger. I work for the Utility Consumer Counselors Office, or the OUCC, and we're one of two state agencies that's here this evening. Talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We hope that on your way in, you picked up a couple of things. One is the witness sign-in sheet. If you'd like to speak or provide written comments, this is the form to fill out. I'll talk more about it in just a minute. The other is a fact sheet that we've put together. On the front, we've got some basic facts about how the public field hearing works. Then we go into some background information on the Pleasant View cases. And then at the very end of the backside, we've got some bullet points on the two state agencies that are here tonight. The Utility Regulatory Commission and the Utility Consumer Counselors Office are both state agencies. We deal with the same issues, but we have different roles. The Utility Regulatory Commission has authority over the rates and charges of about 700 utilities in the state. It acts as a court. Any case that comes before it, the commission is required by law to come in with a neutral standpoint, balance ratepayer interests with utility interests, and make a decision based on the evidence that's in the record before it. That in a nutshell is how the IURC works. And most water and sewer utilities in Indiana are not under the IURC's jurisdiction. Most of them are municipal or regional water or sewer districts. Those operate as local units of government and generally are not under IURC purview. But an investor-owned utility would be under IURC jurisdiction, and that's the case here with Pleasant View. The IURC basically works as the court. It's the judge and jury in cases before it. The OUCC, which I work for, is a separate agency. We represent the interests of all consumers in all cases before the commission. We don't have to intervene in cases under the law. We're automatically a party to every case that goes before the commission. We've got about 50 people on staff. 10 of them are lawyers. Most of the rest are accountants, economists, and engineers. And so any time there's a rate case or another case before the commission, we dive in, take a good, close look from an economic and engineering and accounting standpoint, as well as a legal standpoint. And that's our role in the case, and that's what we do, basically. The reason that we're here tonight is to give you the chance to weigh in on the Pleasant View cases. And what's going to happen here at 6:00 is that for all practical purposes, this room will become a courtroom. And up here behind me, there will be a judge, an administrative law judge, who will run the hearing. He'll be joined by one of the commissioners and a court reporter. Also up here will be Carol Crone. She's one of our staff attorneys with the OUCC. If you would like to speak this evening, it's really simple. We ask that you fill the form out. If you indicate that you would like to speak, what will happen during the hearing is that Ms. Crone will call you up. You'll be sworn in just as you would be in court, tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth. And Carol may have a preliminary question or two for you, and then you'll have the opportunity to provide any comments that you would like. Anything you say here will be taken down by the court reporter. It becomes evidence. The commission's required to review that before it makes its decision in the case. So if there's any information that you think would be helpful for the commission to have as it weighs the evidence and makes its decision, this is a great opportunity to say that and get that in the record. Whether it's a financial impact of the proposed rate increases, whether it's an environmental issue, whether you have service quality issues, anything that you think would be helpful for the commission to know before it makes its decision and for the OUCC to know as we continue our review is fair game. And we would encourage you to take advantage of the chance that you have this evening to provide that information. If you're more comfortable putting your comments in writing rather than coming up and speaking, you have that option as well. You can use the same form to provide written comments. In the event you've already typed them up or written them out and brought a letter and you'd like to attach that to the form, that's no problem. Just let us know, and we'll be happy to get that in the record. Any written or oral comments we get tonight will go into the case record, and they do become evidence that the commission is required to review before it makes its decision. Now, a few things you will not see tonight. One is any kind of a final decision. The OUCC has not weighed in on the cases yet. We have until October 7th to do that. So we're in the process now of doing our engineering, accounting, and legal review. We have a case team that's assigned that's looking into both of the cases that Pleasant View has filed. And we have until October 7th to file our reports and our recommendations for the commission to consider. You won't see a presentation by the utility this evening. The reason for that is the utilities already made its case to the commission in writing. In any IURC rate case, a utility will make its case in writing. Then the Consumer Counselors Office will come along by the deadline that we're given, will present our case in writing as well. And then typically, there is a hearing where attorneys for both sides can cross-examine each other. That won't be the case in this particular case. Both parties make their cases in writing, and that will be considered by the commission. We have some copies of Pleasant View's filings here this evening. I've put them out over here. If you'd like to take a look at those, you're more than welcome to. We also have the documents online, and we've got information in the fact sheet to help you navigate to those documents on our website. One other thing we want to let you know, during the hearing, the judge and the commissioner are not able to answer questions. Reason for that's really simple. They're bound by the same ethical rules that bind a judge in a local courtroom. Their job is to weigh all the evidence, take everything in, and ultimately make a decision based on what's in the record. However, we do have several staff here from the OUCC. If you've got any questions or want to talk about the cases with any of us one-on-one, we'll be around before, during, and after the hearing, and we'll be glad to talk with you. I've introduced Ms. Crone from our legal division. In the back of the room here is Richard Corey. He's one of our staff accountants. And Mr. Hal Reese is in the hallway. He's one of our staff engineers. So if you'd like to talk to any of us one-on-one this evening, we'll be around and be happy to do that. Again, if you would like to speak or provide written comments, please fill this form out. If the hearing gets going and you weren't really interested in talking, but you change your mind, you may certainly do that. Just feel free to grab one of the forms, fill it out. I'll be sitting up here, and I'll be happy to take those at any time. So again, thanks for coming out. We hope you'll take advantage of the opportunity you have tonight to share any comments with the commission that you think will be helpful to it as it makes its decision. And we look forward to hearing what you have to say tonight. So welcome, and thanks again for coming out. And I'll get out of the way so the commission can set up and get started right at 6:00. Thanks a lot.
Bigfoot.
Play basketball.
I'm the communications manager for the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. Field hearings are an important part of the decision-making process, and they're your opportunity to speak directly to the commission. Here tonight are the commissioner from the IURC, the presiding administrative law judge, court reporter who will take down your verbal and written comments. They may be entered into the case record. Before the commission reaches a decision in this case, it will review the evidence presented by all parties, including the comments submitted here tonight. Now, I understand you might have questions for the commission. However, because this is a pending proceeding, the commissioners and judge are not allowed to answer questions or engage in discussion about the case. However, I will be available to speak with you about your concerns and address any procedural questions you may have. For those of you not familiar with the commission, our charge is to weigh the interests of both the consumers and the utilities, and to make sure the utility provide adequate and reliable service at reasonable prices. The commission has five commissioners and a professional staff of about 75 people. We employ attorneys, accountants, engineers, and analysts to review the cases and make recommendations on those that are pending. The IURC also has a consumer affairs division that serves as a liaison between ratepayers and the utilities. If you have a specific utility complaint that is unrelated to this case, please feel free to stop by the back of the room to discuss it with me. If you are interested in browsing testimony related to this case, you may do so by accessing the IURC's electronic document system, which is accessible from our webpage at IN.gov/IURC. Here you can also find iffy cues and other helpful information. Now that further ado, I ask you please turn your attention to Judge Craig Ellis. Thank you.
And before we go on the record, I'd like to personally thank the city of Connerfield and Mayor Urban for allowing us to use this room and for all of you for turning out. Let's go on the record.
Before we do, if any of you have cell phones, please turn it off for the duration of the hearing.
This is a field hearing before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, and a cause docketed before the commission is Cause Number 44351-U, captioned as "In the Matter of the Petition of Pleasant View Utilities, Inc. for a New Schedule of Rates and Charges." Also, Cause Number 44352-U, which is captioned as "In the Matter of the Petition of Pleasant View Utilities, Inc. for a New Schedule of Rates and Charges." Notice of the time and the place that the hearing was given is provided by law by publication in Marion County through the Indianapolis Star and in Fayette County through the News Examiner. Each said newspapers is a newspaper of general circulation, printed and published in the English language, and said publications were made 10 days prior to the date of this field hearing. Proofs of publication and notices have been received by the commission and are now incorporated in the record of this cause by reference and placed in the official files of the commission. Notice has also been given to the Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor and other interested parties. May we have appearances, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Appearing on behalf of the OUCC this evening, Carol Crone, Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, Indianapolis, Indiana. Also appearing in this cause as lead counsel but not present this evening, Tiffany Murray.
Will all who know themselves to be witnesses in this cause please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the evidence you will give in this cause will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You may be seated. Ms. Crone?
Thank you, Your Honor. The public's first witness this evening, David Owen Lay. I would ask you to state your full name for the record.
My name is David Owen Lay. I live at 3631 West Starlight Drive in Pleasant View. I don't have any testimony. I've just got a comment. I'd like to know the financials of Pleasant View Utilities. I'd like to have them put on record. I also would like to know why it's taken 13 years to have a water increase when the city of Connerville just had two increases here in the last four years that I know of. And I think it's a little bit extravagant to raise our water rates $18 at one time. And I think that the majority of the people live out there, most of them are working for $6, $8, $10, $12 an hour, and we just can't afford that kind of extravagant increase on our sewer or the water. Also, would like to know what's been done to upgrade the sewer in the last five years since we had the last meeting on the possibility of either fixing the sewer or selling it to a private entity. I'd like to see that, and I'd like to have it put on record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next witness this evening, Your Honor, is Leonard Westerfield.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Westerfield. I reside at 3142 West Trinity Parkway. Since the last time that you had a hearing on this, I've moved into the neighborhood, so I'm unaware of all that information. My question is the unknown. I have no idea what's going on with this plant, you know, why the upgrade is needed. I would like to know what all is needed. To me, it's saying that it needs a complete overhaul with all the tanks, et cetera. Of course, I don't know. That's why I'm here. As far as the overall increase on the treatment plant improvements, that's almost 108%. I mean, that's going way overboard. So the point I want to make about that is, if it's a complete overhaul, and this is just a suggestion to me, I mean, we're going to upgrade, pay for an upgrade of a treatment plant while somebody else profits off of it. I'm just suggesting, will you give a piece of pie to the Pleasant View residents? Have them buy into it. If that's the case, have them buy into it. If they sell the place, it goes with the place itself. And again, I don't know all the upgrades. I think that that would be the fair thing to do. Because if there's no money being made in it, I understand, but obviously there is. Now, as far as the water increase, that's 51% increase. Like the gentleman that was just up here right now, that's significant. So until I really get all the information on the plant, the sewer plant, I know it's old by what I hear, but for what needs to be done, I would like to know where it is now and where it needs to be. Because the way it sounds, it's a complete overhaul. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next witness this evening, Deanna Dudley. And if you could state your full name.
Okay. My name is Deanna Dudley. I live at 3075 West Trinity. I have lived out there forever. I drive like an hour, over an hour to work. I would think about moving. All of the bills go up everywhere. I don't know how many empty houses are out there now. Do you have my sheet? Because I thought I could...
Did you want to refer to it during your comments?
And I agree with them. I don't know what improvements were made and how many homes are already vacant that really don't create income for these improvements. And maybe that's why it's like 100, you know, my, it's going to double mine. Can they only file like this each time improvements are made? And are we able to know what improvements are made and what customers are actually affected with this? I don't know what's going on. I don't. But if something's going to go wrong with the water and it's going to keep going up, it just went up in '08. It hadn't went up in 13 years before then. I just, I don't know what's going on either. If it's going to cost that much money, it seems like it should be the, be absorbed some other way than with the people that are living out there trying to make it and trying to keep their houses out there.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and take that. Thank you very much. The next witness this evening, Michelle Spivey. And if you could state your full name, please.
Sure. Michelle Spivey. I'm Michelle Spivey, and I live at 973 South County Road, 350 West. My husband and I have actually lived out there for over 21 years. We've yet to see an increase like this. And throughout the years that we've lived out there, we've seen the vacancy, and this is, this $27 a month increase almost is going to be a financial hardship for the residents that live out there now. And not only that, but in the community that we live in, in Fayette County, the, you know, the unemployment rate is, you know, is very bad. Another concern that I think that we should look at is the vacancies in the homes right now and the deterrent that that will bring for other residents to reside in Pleasant View, which will not only, you know, cause more hardship with the bills being paid there in Pleasant View. So again, like everyone else said, we'd like to see the reason, you know, the reason for the increases. And we understand that our bills go up, everyone's due, but at a rate of $27 a month after all of this is said and done, I think is going to be overwhelming, more than overwhelming for a lot of the residents that reside there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your Honor, so far, we've received only one other comment sheet, and I would encourage those present, to the extent anyone else would like to speak this evening, to fill out one of these forms, hand it to Anthony Swinger, and he'll make sure that I get it and call you as a witness. But the next witness this evening is Fran Bender Colasacco. And if you could state your full name for the record, please.
Hi. My name is Fran Bender Colasacco, and I'm a resident out there in Pleasant View, and I do not represent any other entity other than myself. I agree with the previous comments, and I, you know, it's ditto, ditto. But I have a couple of questions. I know you can't answer questions per se, but they may be rhetorical in nature. I was wondering what has been done in the past, in the past, up to the present, about the current sewage treatment system, and who is accountable? This is not a new problem. Pleasant View is an older utility, or older subdivision, and I just wondered, does the OUCC consider past expenditures on the wastewater treatment plant or the lack thereof? And if the private owner, operator has not been responsible, should that entity not be held responsible and have to obtain a private loan and not pass the full cost onto the
If there are any other persons who would like to speak this evening, this would be the perfect time to raise your hand so that we know. If there are other people here this evening who have written comments or intend to complete written comments to submit without speaking, we could perhaps go off the record for a few minutes and give you time to do that. Is there anybody who would like to complete written comments to submit? Anyone else who plans to speak this evening?
Can I say something else?
Yes.
Because I'm learning now. If, can you give me your name again? Deanna Dudley. Thank you. That's kind of what I was wondering, if any kind of business or entity went and had expenses to be able to put off on someone else, if it's their business, I think that you should try to absorb some of that. Shouldn't be able to, everybody does it. If there's a way out, or you can try it, you know, it's good, but I'm just saying for Pleasant View, it's not good. You know, it's, things could get better out there. The water gets better, and, you know, economy gets better, and people start buying houses. But the water goes up, and the houses keep emptying, and it's not going to be good for the whole community.
Leonard Westerfield. Kind of to reiterate on that, to my understanding, every home's going to have to be re-tiled. Now, there's a lot of vacant homes, so we're going to absorb the cost of all those vacant homes is what I'm seeing. Anybody that's in business should be in business to make money. I have no problem with that. But with the increases that are happening, and for them to ask other people to spend money to, for them to make money, I've got a problem with it. If I'm not one to get a percentage of it, I've got a problem with it. So that's what I'm looking at. I'm seeing a complete overhaul, but yet it's going to be paid by the residents. And I think that that needs to be looked at very, very seriously. Because if you're a business owner, it's almost like they're asking us, the bank, to put all the money down. After it's done, they profit from it. If that's wrong, please show me where that's wrong. I appreciate it.
Anyone else this evening? Could we take just a few minutes off the record, Your Honor?
Yeah, yeah, let's take a five-minute recess and go off the record and allow the people, if they are, to come up and... Ask your comment on, you can go to our website, and you can find these cases, and you can look at the, and I think there's copies over there. You can look at the applications that Pleasant View submitted, and some of those questions may be answered. Like, I know the financials are in there. So I would recommend that you look at some of that stuff as well. Now, is that at www.indiana.gov/... or slash IURC? Yes. Thank you.
I think if there were enough people here, they would have thrown that shield when we first got it. Like, really? No, I just looked at it like before last, and I was like, oh, that's the one. You know, that's the number one. Better get on this one.
It looks so, like so far, there's just one other person. If we're ready to go back on the record, we could conclude.
Oh, Carol, I might ask Ms. Crone if you would, take just a couple of minutes, since I need to be careful about what I express and what I say. Outline what happens when the OUCC files its testimony and the sort of things that folks may see in that. That will also be available on the website once their filing has occurred. And that would give you additional information, and additional information, which the commission will be looking at when it actually gets ready to make its decision. So, Carol, thank you.
And without getting into actual substance, which I'm not permitted to do at this point, we have an accountant. He's present this evening. To the extent anyone has questions or topics you'd specifically like him to address, he has been here listening to the comments so far, and I'm sure that is helpful for him to know. He has looked over, done an audit of utility books. He has looked back at prior rate cases and also annual reports that are submitted by the utility. Annual reports that each year, you have a snapshot of, you know, what the revenue is, what the expenses are, what the assets are, that sort of thing. And that type of information is also available. Now that we have so much more information at our fingertips on the computer, that information can be obtained through the commission as well. In addition to that accounting review, there is an engineer present this evening, but in the hallway. Some of you probably spoke with Hal Reese on his, on your way in this evening. And Hal has met with the utility owner, manager, and has also, you know, inspected things. He has reviewed records both from prior cases and also from proceedings involving the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. And Hal does a thorough review of that, as well as going and seeing, you know, with his own eyes what's happening. His information will be included in our filing, and if he has engineering recommendations on system improvements or other concerns, those would be included with the comments that Mr. Reese would be preparing. We would also have someone who's more of a financial expert looking in terms of, if I say capital structure, I think it goes to some of the issues you've been talking about, how much is invested by the investor-owner versus how much debt and at what rate is somebody borrowing. And so these things, you know, all impact the bottom line for rates. And to the extent there are operating expenses that are being increased also in this filing, we would also be examining those, probably Rich Corey in conjunction with Hal Reese together, determining whether those are reasonable costs, whether it's necessary expenditure. And the process in the small U filing is a little bit different in terms of a report being filed rather than having separate prefiled testimony. being filed, rather than having separate prefiled testimony. Typically, in the small U's, it's a report from our office. But again, those are the different categories that will be covered by the technical experts in our office who are working on this. I would also add that they are people who have, you know, a great deal of experience. Unfortunately, there have been other water, wastewater utilities in Indiana in recent years that have had problems, and they have had experience with those, you know, looking into the problems, working on getting them corrected, and trying to have an outcome that is reasonable, affordable, fair for customers. So, we do have knowledgeable staff, lots of experience, they're poring over this, and they definitely take your concerns very seriously. And we appreciate not only the comments here this evening, but written comments that we've received previously, and that I suspect we may receive in the next 10 day, or the next seven days, I believe. Does that help?
Thank you, Ms. Crone.
And for further questions of a substantive nature, it would be better for you to direct them to the individual people that I pointed out from our office after the hearing, because that type of communication in front of the commissioner, who would be deciding the case, isn't appropriate at this point.
Let's go back on the record. Ms. Crone?
Thank you, your honor. I believe we have only one other witness to call, who may not have been sworn in earlier. And I would ask Jackie Church to come forward.
Ms. Church, can you raise your right hand?
Mm-hmm.
Do you swear or affirm the evidence you will give in this cause will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Jackie Church. I live at 3422 West Serenity. I'm probably the, one of the oldest residents out there, not only in age, but in how long I've lived there.
Thank you.
We've lived there since 1975. I've seen a number of increases come up. When we first moved there, our water bill and sewage was $10. Now, agreeably, things do need to go up, but with each increase, we were promised better service, better sewage, everything has been. But as somebody that's lived there for 35 years, I've not seen, I've not seen any improvement in water pressure. Pressure in our house is terrible. Sewage, like my husband says, will the toilet flush any better if they do this? You know? And I think that has a lot to do with what the other people are saying. If we can see an improvement, I don't mind an increase, but having had the increases that we've had in the past, I've not seen any improvement in our service. So that's the one thing that I want to make sure, is that I don't mind paying more money as long as the service is comparable to the amount of the increase. Thank you.
Since you've brought up some service issues, would it be all right if I asked you a few follow-up questions?
Uh-huh.
You have specifically mentioned water pressure issues. Could you give me some idea of the frequency with which you experience that?
Well, that's almost, that's almost daily with shower pressure. You have to turn faucets on full blast to get the kind of pressure that you need for, takes longer for the washing machine to fill, that kind of stuff. Even though we've, in our particular case, we've replaced water lines. Now, before, now, we're on city utility, city water now, which has made a big difference. Before, we were constantly having to do changes, and faucets have been changed because of the amount of sediment that gathers in it. It hasn't been as bad since we went city water, but that's one of the things, I've probably replaced more faucets than I care to even. Faucets and toilet insides because of the sediment and pressure, just pressure is terrible.
And when the switch was made to the city water, did you notice any change in the pressure problems?
Not in the pressure, just in taste, because we didn't have that bleach taste once in a while where they cleaned the wells or fixed the wells. And so taste was about the only thing. Pressure, maybe a little bit better, but not to any significant increase.
Okay. Now, the other areas some people have in other utilities, expressed problems with service interruptions, have there been outages?
No, only with power outages. That we, I think we've had some, but that's not on a, that's not on a routine basis. I've not, I've not had any of that.
Okay.
So...
All right. Any other service-related complaints or issues?
No. But if they are going to replace the tiles to every, you know, to all the houses, that would be a big improvement. Because I know in the place that I live, there was a number of times, because I live on Serenity, which is a little higher than Starlight, which is the road just north of me, and the sewer pipe runs down through what we call the gully. And I know at times there have been broken tiles along there that have been exposed that have taken a while for those to be repaired. Now, that's been several years ago, but that is one issue, that if those would be replaced, that would be fantastic. That maybe go with a larger size and, you know, where they would not be as much problem in the drainage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there are no other written comments and no other speakers this evening, I would go ahead and offer several exhibits into evidence this evening, your honor. Public Field Hearing Exhibit One contains the original request for the public field hearing with 23 signatures, and also attached to that are two comments that we received prior to this evening's field hearing. Public Field Hearing Exhibit Two contains comment sheets from the six consumers that we've heard from this evening. We would offer public field hearing exhibits one and two into evidence at this time.
Let the record reflect that Public's Exhibits FH1 and FH2 are admitted into this cause.
Thank you, your honor. The public would also ask that the record in this proceeding for this field hearing be left open until October 4th, Friday, October 4th. The OUCC would plan to file those additional comments by the close of business that day. And we would ask that those be permitted and accepted into the record as late-file public field hearing exhibit three.
Let the record reflect that Public's Exhibit FH3 will be allowed in this cause as a late-file exhibit.
Thank you.
Sorry, late-file exhibit FH3.
Thank you, your honor. And although I had previously provided the information on submitting those comments, I would just repeat one more time, that the website for the OUCC, www.in.gov/OUCC, has a section where you can input comments online. We also would be happy to accept comments in, through mail, by fax, but if we could be sure to receive them from you by noon on Friday, October 4th, that would be helpful. And if anyone does need a mailing address, since some people are watching at home, I believe, you would address it to Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, 115 West Washington Street, Suite 1500, South Indianapolis, Indiana, 46204. And our fax number there, 317-232-5923. We also have a telephone number, you could reach us. Our toll-free number is 888-2...
441.
Pardon me? Thank you. And then our main office number, non-toll-free number, 317-232-2494. And we would be happy to submit any additional comments received from you or from your neighbors to the commission for its consideration in this case. We thank you again for your time this evening. And with that, the public rests for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Crone. Commissioner Lavis?
You've understood that we can't discuss matters of concern to you, but what I want you to understand is, that does not mean that we don't share your concern in terms of this being an important proceeding. I want you to understand that we will give this full and complete consideration as we do all proceedings. And again, I would remind you that once the OUCC has filed its report, that's also available on the commission's website if you have any further questions. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. For those of you who spoke before the commission this evening, thank you with that.
The only thing I have to add is, I would like to thank you as well for coming out and sharing your concerns and comments with us. Thank you. This field hearing is adjourned.